Join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I consider a motion to approve the agenda, we've got our claims number has changed. Claims number is two hundred ninety-four thousand, six hundred forty dollars and forty cents. So would that change, I would consider a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yep.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Move on to our opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the board for items not on the agenda today?
Yes.
Okay, good morning.
Thank you. State Senator Jim Boland, representing all of Union County and a portion of Lincoln County. I just wanted to talk a little bit about legislative redistricting, which is gonna, is taking place at the present time. I don't want to take more than five minutes of your time. I'd just like to remind you that between 1990 and 2010, Lincoln County was divided up in a multiple of different ways, and there was no legislative district entirely within the county. In 2010, after the, after the census of 2010, and my service in the legislature, I was fortunate enough to be appointed to the committee that makes these decisions. And in conversations with Mr. Commissioner Schmidt, current Commissioner Schmidt and former Commissioner Gillespie, they were both very interested in having one legislative district with the growth of the county entirely within the boundaries of Lincoln County. And so in July of 2011, a resolution was passed by the Lincoln County Commission urging the redistricting commission, committee to establish at least one legislative district entirely within Lincoln County, and that was accomplished in 2011. What I would like to bring to you today is a proposed resolution that you don't have to, you can take it, take it or leave it, that would basically state the same thing and just state that when the committee meets and we're starting, we're gonna start meeting next Monday in Pier, that one of the goals of the, of the committee would be that Lincoln County would have at least one legislative district entirely within the boundaries of the county, as we do at the present time, and that we not go backwards and be divided up into a host of different legislative districts as we were between 1990 and 2010. So that's the purpose. I came here today to, to talk about. I have a proposed resolution here. I'd be more than happy to give it to a gentleman here, and he can pass it out to you as you see fit. I would also like to remind you that on October thirteenth, if you're interested, there will be public input taken on this subject in Sioux Falls. It'll be, there'll be one session in the afternoon, one session in the evening. I do not know the location yet. I'm not the chairman of the committee, but I am a member of the committee again here in 2021. And then I'd also just let you know that the final decision on this will be made in Pier at a special session of the legislature on November eighth to ninth of this year. So...
Jim, what's that date again?
Pardon me?
Sioux Falls?
It's Wednesday, October thirteenth. And there'll be a meeting in the afternoon. I don't know exact time yet. There'll be an afternoon session and also an evening session. So that's my purpose in coming. I thank you for your time. I'll give some copies of this resolution to a gentleman here as the deputy auditor, I believe, and you can, you can go from there as you want. I will say this, though. In the, in the decision-making process, every bit of ammunition you have for trying to help out Lincoln County would be appreciated. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Jim.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to follow up with what Senator Boland had to say and make sure that that gets on the next agenda so that we can take affirmative action on what he requested.
I don't see any problem with that. Anybody else in the audience wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? All right, if not, we'll go ahead with commissioner reports. Any commissioners have any reports?
Madam Chair, I'll just say this. It's beautiful in the hills.
Well, good. I hope you enjoy your time out there. We will go ahead and move on with our regular business. And item one on our agenda.
Okay, so the Beersford Republic, which is one of Lincoln County's appointed legal newspapers, failed to publish a notice of adoption for the hearing that was supposed to occur today at this meeting. Therefore, we need to reschedule and re-advertise in order to hold this public hearing. And the public hearing was supposed to be for, to, excuse me here, was supposed to be to consider the adoption of a resolution of Lincoln County to approve the preliminary subdivision plan of Peter's addition. And we need to reschedule that to September twenty-eighth. I have notified the applicant with the assistance of the Planning and Zoning Department, and they, they are aware, and I had another conversation with them yesterday about this, so...
All right. Consider a motion to reschedule the public hearing and second reading?
How many times does this happen now with the Beersford Republic?
This has happened this year with the Beersford Republic four times.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to reschedule the public hearing and second reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Go ahead, move on to the next item. Debbie, are you handling this?
Debbie Block, Treasurer. I am proposing that we start an administrative fee of $25 per title that is entirely processed through the mail. I know as we are looking for ways to bring in revenue, I think this would be a good way to do it. As of January through July of this year, we have transferred seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirteen titles for cars, trucks, motorcycles, ATVs, and snowmobiles, and 500 boats. If we, I figure we do about thirty-five percent through the mail, strictly through the mail. I don't have an exact number because I wasn't keeping track of it before. I figure if, if we would have done this, we would have been collecting approximately fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars from January through July.
What, what are other counties doing?
I did email all the counties, and I got fifteen responses. Out of the fifteen, thirteen are doing it, and two are not.
Are they, is that fee, the $25, is that pretty consistent across counties?
Yep.
Is Minnehaha County doing that?
Yes, and I did-
Did you say fifty or fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
Had responded to my, to my email. Yeah, I, I talked to Minnehaha County. They started it in mid-April, and from mid-April to now, they've collected eighteen thousand dollars. So I think this would be a good way for us to get revenue in.
Do you have the resolution?
I, I did type something up. I didn't know if I was supposed to or how I was supposed to handle that, but I did.
Well, I think, I think what we probably need to do is have our state's attorney's office look at the resolution.
Okay.
And then get that in our share file so we have a chance to read it.
Sure.
And then maybe, and we can put it back on the agenda. I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
I just like to see the resolution before we-
Sure.
-take any action on it.
Yeah, I just wasn't real sure on the process and how to go about doing it, so...
Sure, that's no problem. I'm gonna ask for a motion to table this and put it on the next agenda.
I've got it. Madam Chair, I've got a couple questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Debbie, you said there's about seventeen thousand titles a year you process?
That's, that's what we had done just from January through July of this year.
Okay, so thirty-five percent of that is about six thousand, so that'd be twelve thousand titles a year. Twelve thousand times fifteen dollars, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in fees. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
So estimated revenue that could be brought in here is a hundred and eighty thousand?
Could be.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Madam Chair, a question.
Go ahead.
So I'm just trying to understand fee structures, and don't get me wrong, I always think that we should be looking at a fee structure versus just general taxes. Do these online or...
Through mail only?
The mail-in, are they, do they take more time, more resources? Just help me understand the justification for a little bit for the...
They do take more time. You know, if, if somebody's sending it in, they don't always have the right fees. We have to call them, get the, tell them what the fees are sometimes, and then they send us a check, or otherwise they do it online. It just gets handled quite a bit more than, than a normal title when person comes in.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at, is there, there always in my mind needs to be a justification why someone's getting charged more than someone else.
Oh, yeah, and, and you know, I, they started, you know, a lot of counties have already been doing this for a while, and, and I was trying, you know, when I heard about it, it was like, okay, how do we justify that, you know, but they do take more time.
Madam Chair, if there's no further questions, I'd offer a motion to table until our next meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we've, we have now formally bid the dirt work for the 4H dirt moving project. I regret to tell you that the bids came in a lot higher than we had anticipated. So we have a little bit of a dilemma. Low bid would be with precision dirt work, the primary bid with just doing the dirt work and a storm sewer, which would lead from the two future wash areas. And it has to go underneath of the, the building we'd like to build next year. So that's why it was part of this project. That came in at ninety-four thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. The alternates were the gravel to do the road, which we'd like to have put around the outside perimeter of the whole project. And the other alternate was the sand for the horse rein itself. The purchase of the sand, delivery of the sand, and laying the sand. So here's our predicament. I, I had forty thousand dollars in the budget to do this project. I probably could, with putting off the, just basically not purchasing a piece of equipment, which I was hoping to purchase for the fence building, and a little bit of other, I could probably muster up another ten thousand dollars of budget authority. So we're still sitting at forty-four thousand dollars short to do the primary part of the budget or the project. I have, I met with the 4H people last night, and we had a long discussion. Kristi Swider is here to represent the foundation. The dilemma the foundation has is they have a fair share of money, which of course they want to put it towards their building, which of course we were hoping to start. When I say building, I say that it's the show ring facility, the primary center focus of the building. Part of the dilemma they have is, is a lot of their fundraising is ear tag for certain projects. So of their monies, they're really only comfortable with releasing maybe ten, maybe fifteen thousand dollars towards the dirt work. So here's, I, knowing that we've been in a budget, strong budget discussion and decreasing our budgets and coming up with expenditure, or income, it's hard to come to you, but here's my, what I'd like to ask you guys to do is we do have the additional money that's from the rental of, for the facility at the transfer station and the rental for the telephone poles at the existing 4H grounds, and those monies were supposed to be ear tagged to 4H. I believe that's about eight thousand dollars. I believe there's about another two thousand dollars in hay rental that was supposed to be also put towards 4H, so that's about ten thousand dollars. And then, uh, from talking to John Hanson, we, he and I kind of, we've met, we've come together. We anticipate the sale of the two semi-trucks and the garbage truck to possibly be twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. So if we anticipate those revenue sources and you guys would give the authorization to supplement the budget, I think we could meet this shortfall.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is this one of those projects that needs to be done all at once, or can it be split up into two different phases?
We've had a lot of discussion with that. The engineer for my, Meg and I are here. It, it would be best if this is done all at one time. If we had to remove something, we talked about removing the storm sewer. That would make it a difficult install because of the location, having to go underneath that future building. And also, as you do, when you start laying that pipe, you kind of want to do it in its entirety so you get it the right drop, the right grade. So kind of, there's some things that might be doable, but it makes it a little more difficult on the other hand. It may be more expensive.
Madam Chair?
I don't see it getting any cheaper, do you? I mean...
I do not.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Schmidt.
John, so you have, you have figured out a way in which the foundation allocates some money. We use the rental from hay ground. We use the rental from, for the 4H for what they're using for laying the high lines and the sale of excess for the transfer station, and that will all cover the shortfall?
And the sell, the hopeful sell that the equipment will sell high enough?
Yeah.
Yes, that's my hope.
That's an innovative way, John. I congratulate you. I think that's one, that's a pretty good alternative for us to consider.
I guess I'd like to hear from our auditor.
I haven't had an opportunity to look at anything. I didn't know that this was an option.
Okay.
So I'd have to look and see where they're at with everything. We haven't surplus the equipment out of the transfer station as of yet, so we'd have to do that also.
All right.
Do you know, excuse me, Madam Chair, the, if we awarded it to the low bidder, indicated when they might be able to start and finish?
I, I don't know when they could start, but I think the requirement is they have to have it done before frost, correct? Is that, that's right into the SPAC, so...
So, I mean, the, the point is, we hardly have the time to delay. We either just make the decision to do it or not do it. And we have a mechanism maybe of paying for it other than the general taxpayers, which would be a benefit. It's all taxpayer money, but not coming out of our general fund directly.
So what did you think the supplement hearing would have to be for how much?
It would have to be for forty-four thousand, um, one hundred and nine dollars, I guess.
Why don't we, Sherry, can you put something together yet during this meeting? We could move this to the end, or...
Sure.
And so, John, I'm gonna ask that you meet with Sherry and see if this is workable, and then we'll bring it back up here later this morning. But if you want to go on to your item four and then go and work with her on that, that'd be great.
So I met with three different contractors to bid the bat guano cleanup in the upper attic. Same three bidders that bid the mitigation, and that was Central State's bats, Olson's pest control, and also, uh, the local company with Woods Roofing, I can't, Nice Bats, I think is what they're called. All said and done, Nice Bats opted not to bid it. They didn't think they could get it done in a timely manner and weren't sure quite what pricing they would give us. So low bid turned out to be Central State's bats at eight thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. There's quite a bit difference between them and Olson's, which I'm not quite sure why, but I've, I've got strong faith that Central State's will do an adequate job, so I would like to award them with the bid.
All right, you've heard the request. Is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'd like to know, Madam Chair, excuse me, I'd like to know how much money we have actually spent on bat removal or bat things on that courthouse over the past maybe two years.
I guess I don't remember what we spent on the mitigation right off the top of my head, Commissioner Schmidt. But I would guess that was probably about, also about ten thousand dollars, so about eighteen thousand dollars, I suppose.
Any other questions, Commissioner? All right. Anybody else have any discussion or questions? If not, we've got a motion and a second. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to Terry. Thanks, John. You'll get with Sherry, and thanks.
Morning.
Morning.
So I have before you this morning, it's a cost share agreement, Structure Forty-two, zero, one, zero dash, one oh nine. This structure is located on 465th Avenue, I believe, just on the southwest corner of Lenox. We're gonna be doing this, this is gonna be the 2022 Bridge Project replacement that we'll be, we'll be doing next year. I've been in negotiation with the city of Lenox as far as doing a cost share on this, on this structure, and they have agreed to do it twenty percent, up to a hundred and twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. The, the cost estimate, the engineer's cost estimate on this is, I believe, is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So I've been looking for approval and authorize the chair to, to execute this agreement. You have any questions?
I'll offer a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt, are you back? Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Next item I have is approval to purchase off of a Yankton County bid for a base one product. This is something we're gonna be using on County Road 121. It's a base stabilizer. We're gonna inject into that gravel road. We're looking at about thirteen hundred gallons at twenty-four dollars a gallon. We're looking at about thirty-three thousand dollars for the product.
We've heard the request. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt? Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Terry.
Next item I have is approval to purchase off a Brown County bid for milling and reclaiming. This is gonna be for the additive injection line that they have in here. Basically, it's a layback process for a dollar five a square yard at about twenty and twenty-five hundred dollars mobilization. Again, this will be the, the train that'll go in and grind up and inject the base one into the three miles of County Road 121, so...
All right. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the purchase.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'm back. I'll second that.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item eight, temporary easement for fence. Mr. Golden, good morning.
Thank you. I will pull it up here in a second. The landowner here at the intersection is renting out a portion of his property for, I believe it's a utility, and he needs to put a security fence up. And if you look at the property, you can see the corner there is cut. That is actually county. It's part of the H lot. It's kind of an unusual design at that location. And so he would like to make a request to surplus it back to what would be a normal H lot that basically drains each and the ditches, but he doesn't have time to get that accomplished. And so the request here is that we give him permission to go ahead and put a security fence up into our right-of-way there for sixteen months, and then he can approach us with a request for, to us to surplus that corner there and for him to have an opportunity to purchase it.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? If not, you've heard the request. Is there a motion?
What's the, is there any financial impact on the count?
I don't think so with that little corner there. There's not really much, we have to keep a portion of the H lot. So what we're talking about is basically taking the two lines and drawing them so they're straight. So we're only talking about, I don't even know, if it's a couple of tenths of an acre. It's a pretty small piece of ground sitting there. Obviously, at some point in time, there must have been considerations to have a different shape of that intersection. I don't think that that's in the plans at this point. And so we're really just talking about going to a normal H lot on that piece of property. I don't think it has any value to anybody else but the landowner at this point.
No concerns with obstructing traffic or views?
No, except that far enough.
Okay. All right.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion. I do need to disclose. I know Dan Danielson. I represented his mother in a guardian, in a four-year-long guardianship hearing. I don't have a conflict. I've never talked to the guy about this, but, in fact, I was surprised to see his name just now on this. But I'm, I just needed to disclose that, but I will make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item, Commissioner Schmidt. We're on the census discussion.
I would ask to table this until the next meeting while I can be there and make some formal presentations on some-
All right.
-data that's important, if that would be all right.
Yeah, we have, we have a meeting on the, can, do we need to do this on the seventh, or can we wait till the fourteenth?
We do not have a meeting-
I don't think there-
We, we do not have a meeting on the fourteenth. That was moved till the twenty-first, and on the twenty-first, we have the county bus tour.
Okay. Well, then we'll, we'll, how long do you think that will be, Jim?
About five to seven minutes.
Okay, we can put that on the next agenda, then. I'd consider a motion to table that. Is that your motion, Commissioner?
I would, I would so move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second by Commissioner Aaron's. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And we have, um, appointing some folks to the Airport Advisory Committee. Jim, you're gonna handle that?
I guess, as you can see, Commissioner Poppins and I conducted some interviews, uh, back in June. We, we had a list of individuals interested in being part of the Airport Advisory Committee. Uh, notice, uh, the names that we have, uh, selected to be part of that. We, we, as you recall, we were hoping to get someone that is a landowner, someone from the vicinity of, uh, of, of a recreational flyer, a, a business flyer, uh, someone from our, uh, of course, our, uh, Airport Advisory, I guess, that run the airport and so on. So, uh, these are the names that, uh, we have referred to, uh, to start this committee, and so I'd ask for their approval today.
Um, do you wanna, just for, um, transparency and clarity, you wanna list the people that you're recommending?
Yes, do you want me to list them?
Yes, please. As part of your motion.
Yes, Airport Advisor Committee at Jordan Hall, Jesse, Von Cord, Blake, Van Gilder, Wyatt, Homical, Bruce, Olenberg, James, Golson, Dale Newth, Darren Chester, and Dave Stewart.
And that's your motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Sean, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries. Um, the next item, I'm, I put this item on the agenda, um, I'm, and purely for the reason that I'm wondering if the courthouse advisory committee, if that is, if that committee has been disbanded or if the committee's gonna work on, um, figuring out like the financing, um, and if they're gonna make a recommendation about how to pay for the recommended courthouse improvements. And so I, I don't know if there's a straight answer for that, but I just wanted to know what the status of the committee was.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. So, um, I got the notice from Sherry last week that you were looking for an update on this. It didn't contain your specific question, so I haven't had an opportunity to think about that.
Okay.
Um, when, when I did get the email, I was thinking, okay, uh, maybe I need to call the architect and find out what's going on. So I called Andrew Ettrum over the weekend. Um, he told me there's been no changes requested to the square footage from, excuse me, from any of the departments at this point in time. So, um, we're still looking at fifty-five thousand square feet. Um, I should also note there is still an RFP pending. I don't know, uh, request for proposal for interested parties to respond to wanting to build that privately. Um, are we still in the window of time for that bill?
It is closed.
Okay.
We've only gotten one response. Um, and it's the first step forward to begin with. Um, and so that'll be on the next agenda for you to open the response. And then the timeline is laid out there. Uh, I think it might be helpful after we get all the proposals, the numbers and everything else, to take it to the courthouse committee to take a look at it. Uh, would be my suggestion, so, um.
What's our, what's our timeline? I mean, we're having our budget discussion at the next, um, commission meeting on the seventh of September. I'm just wondering how that's gonna play into those budget discussions if we don't have some numbers.
I can reach out and see if there's, if they have some numbers. I've been in contact previously, 'cause I'd been authorized to start negotiations and discussions with them. And so, um, once the RP went out, I halted that until we got that, but they're the only ones who's replied at this point.
My, my concern is that we, right now, we don't have anything in the budget to make any land lease payments or anything to help carry any, you know, the construction period, um, that we might be, as part of these negotiations, might need to pay next year. And so I'm looking for that number so we can somehow include something in our budget discussions on the seventh.
I think from just the tentative outline that we have, what we're looking at is probably for the next few months would be, the costs or expenses would be either the lease of the land. They would be, uh, dealing with the architects and those expenses. Um, we wouldn't be looking at potential lease payments for probably twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four in that budget.
But that, but not, the land might come sooner than that.
The land may come sooner than that. It's part of negotiations, but we haven't started it yet. Um, I could get you some rough numbers. I could, I can ask around, see if we could make a guess at it. That'd be the best I could do for you.
Okay. Well, I think we need, we need to have some ideas so that we're not blindsided and we got money there to, to put towards that.
'Cause I think what we're prob, I, I don't think we're talking about a large sum of money, but I think we're in that range of what we probably talked about previously on architect fees and so forth. I think that's what they're going to be looking for, some possible lease or rent, um, along those lines. But I don't really wanna get too far into negotiations, you know, in public.
Sure. No, that, and that's fine. I just want, I want Sherry to have a rough estimate on what that might look like, at least, so we can put a number, um, in the budget. Well, since we're talking about budget on the seventh, if that, if you think that's doable.
You can always come up with a number. I'm not gonna promise how good it is, but
Okay.
we can get you a number to work off of.
All right. That, that was really my only question, um, on what was going on with the committee, so.
Should we set up another meeting of the courthouse committee, maybe mid-September?
Yeah, so, um, we, we would open the RFP next week?
Yes.
Okay, so we'd open the RFP next week, we'd decide whether to award at that time. If we do award it, we would enter into, we've already authorized State's Attorney's Office to enter into contract negotiations, and there may have been some pre-negotiation discussions that have occurred. Nothing concrete at this point.
No.
You could, here is the, I'm trying to think about the positive and negative aspects. If you, if you reconvene the committee, it does open up the possibility of negotiating in public. That is a concern. So maybe we need to have a parallel track process where we're trying to ascertain the number on your side, Bill, through a private negotiation, which is authorized under South Dakota law. And then we have the public committee, which is trying to determine where in the Lincoln County budget the lease payments would come from. And some of that intrudes upon the domain of the commission, but this commission has already decided to la, you know, create a committee to look at these things. We could go back at that. It, it'd be a new charter for the committee is, find the money.
If we, if we did in the last week of September, we're supposed to be done with negotiations by September thirtieth. So might have at least a framework to bring to the committee as well.
Yeah, and so in terms of when the next committee meeting would be, I don't know if doing a mid, we're thinking out loud here, obviously. I don't know if doing a mid-September meeting would be very fruitful or not, because we may not have, uh, negotiation for the committee to consider. I, I, I'm just thinking out loud.
We could do it, we could do it the first week in October at that point and then bring it to the commission. It's just, um, if they're gonna have some input on the direction that it's going.
Well, let's, let's tentatively plan on that then.
First week of October?
Well, our budget will be finalized at that point. That's the only
That's right.
problem I see with waiting that long.
We have till September twenty-eighth.
I think, yeah, I think that's our meeting. When it needs to be finalized.
Let me ask this, without getting in, into any negotiations, what are the possible fees that we, as a county, may encounter as a result of doing this deal? What would we have to pay for?
Well, that's wide and far-ranging, because we can structure this deal. So eventually, we wind up with a re, a, a lease. As far as what we offer on the front side of it, you know, we're gonna wanna negotiate the price down based on if we're going to, you know, lease the property and part of that's gonna be used for, um, the architect fees and the design and those type of things. There may be some other things that we assist them in, maybe for grants or for other things that we look at. So it just depends on what we put together, what we structure, because all of that's gonna be part of coming up with the final number of what the lease payment is.
I'm gonna ask this question, but I don't want you to answer it.
Okay.
Are they asking us to pay for something? Have they asked us to pay for something already? And that's what I'm thinking. Okay.
No, this is, this is just, so when I sit down to negotiate, I try to come up with as many options as possible and figure out what our bottom line is and what we can't do. And then from there, be creative and see what we can do in order to get the deal done.
Well, and that's why I
So that's all that's going on.
Yeah, and that's why I called Andrew Ettrum to say, Andrew, has there been any change to the footprint, to the square footage, or the department? You know, are the departments still all planning to do what they said they were gonna do when we approved this? And that's probably something we need to get a, do a compass check on as well right now, is make sure, 'cause I, you know, one set of plans was briefed to the courthouse improvement committee, uh, asking for a certain amount of square footage. But now we've gotta find out, have any of the departments changed their prospective plans? And I think we probably should get a bead on that as well. That could be done internally, I would think.
And, and we also will have the proposal that's out there at that point in time and some more information, so.
All right.
So are we back to the middle of September, because of budget?
I don't know. We've gotta, if you're advertising your meeting and all that, I mean, how does that? We're gonna have to fit in an extra meeting in September?
Well, we just usually, we'll post it like we normally do and put it on the website, 'cause it's a non-binding meeting.
Right.
We will notice it in case any of the other commissioners wanna show up as in case of quorum, but
Sure.
And I think the purpose of the meeting will be to discuss, um, what, exploratory cost?
I think it's just in order to maybe update them and if we're gonna look at our budget a little bit.
Sure. I think, um, and now that I'm thinking about it, and we're thinking out loud, it may be a good opportunity to put it out to the different departments again. Basically, I'm thinking sheriffs and, uh, State's Attorney's Office to see if they're still set on what they told the architects as to what their plans are. So, um, I think we should circulate it like that.
Is it realistic then to put it on our agenda for the twenty-first?
Can I always say we don't have any updates? So, yes, I think we should probably have it on for the twenty, if we can have it on the twenty-first. If, if we can have a deal done with, or a proposal, or a schedule in place, because the closing date for negotiations is the end of September thirtieth, we could get them done sooner.
Okay.
So we might have something by then.
All right.
Don't know if, don't know if it's possible that we can come up with an agreement, or we may, but an update certainly wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
But we know this, and we can say this with certainty, right? And I'm asking this as a question. There would be no lease payment due before twenty-twenty-three, correct?
Could imagine a building being done before twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four.
We had the architects telling, you know, at the very last meeting that the courthouse improvement committee had held, there was a lot of concern expressed that we weren't moving fast enough. And now we've already, we've already eclipsed that date anyway for not having anything done. And, um, uh, the date that was thrown out there by Andrew Ettrum, or not the date, but the timeframe that was thrown out there by Andrew Ettrum was, could take up to eighteen months. And they foresee that construction would start in the next construction season. So, you know, going off what you're saying, Bill, and what Andrew was saying, and it just doesn't sound like we would have any kind of lease payment. Now, that doesn't preclude us from having other fees to put into our budget for next year for twenty-two, but I don't foresee a lease payment being due until at least twenty-three.
Potentially. It, I mean, yes, I mean, there's
This is the world's fastest construction project, which I highly doubt, according to Andrew.
Yes, those are the numbers we have.
Twenty-three would probably be the earliest.
We just don't know at this point. I guess that's kinda where I wanna get is, do we need to put numbers in our budget?
I will see what I can get for you.
Okay. All right, uh, with that, we have our rescheduling the next item. Um, Sherry, is that your item?
For rescheduling the commission meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, we just need to move the October fifth meeting to October seventh, so that we can do the canvas of the election.
All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll?
Yes. Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. We're gonna go ahead and circle back to item three. Um, did you and Sherry figure anything out on that?
So Sherry and I have talked. It, it seems quite feasible that we probably could supplement the budget with these things. It's a little unknown, but at the very least, at this point, we have to supplement the budget to make it move forward with the anticipation of these other funds covering the cost of the supplement.
Okay, Sherry, are you on board with that?
Yeah, we have, we have the ARPA funds for the drainage and what we could use that on. We'd have to do, we'd have to know that we're going to do that beforehand. If we do, then there's federal guidelines for bidding. I would have to double-check and make sure that these would qualify under the federal guidelines for bidding, the Davis-Bacon Act and all that other stuff that they have to do. So, I mean, it's not a, can I make that decision in five minutes? I'd have to make sure that the architect has, or the, when they did this bid letting, that they followed all the federal guidelines. But otherwise, we have the, um, contingency that we have not dipped into at all this year. So, I mean, we would have those funds available to supplement it. It's if you, if it's, that's what you want to do.
So, I mean, do we need to wait on awarding this till you can look into those things, or are you comfortable with us if we, um?
Well, and, and the only thing we would have to worry about with the ARPA funds is if they followed the federal, the bid guidelines. So, and then that would have, if, we wouldn't have to use those funds at this time. We could do the supplement from the budget. So I think if you move ahead with the bid process, then you're better with these rates or whatever. We don't have to worry about price changes, 'cause the, they seem to be changing a lot. Originally, when this was talked about, it was much less of a cost, and now it's almost doubled, so I don't think we wanna wait for it.
Okay.
Do you know what amount of the project is related to drainage?
Forty thousand dollars, roughly thirty-eight thousand is the storm sewer, I think.
Is, is drainage ARPA eligible?
I think because it's water, with the waterways, I think that it is.
I, I can tell you that, um, this
Sir, could you state your name and address and?
Shane Waterman with I-Meg.
Thank you.
My address, I actually live in Lincoln County, but, um, anyway, going forward, the, um, bids were not taken with any special provisions with regard to the federal, um, guidelines.
the, um, bids were not taken with any special provisions with regard to the federal, um, guidelines that would require Davis-Bacon or any of, any of those attributes. So that wage rates and, and the provisions in that are not covered by this bid, just to forewarn you on that item. But these are, um, pretty standard prices and, and everything fits. It's just a matter of fitting the budget to the, to the project. And so with that, oh, that's all I have to add to the conversation at this time.
All right, thank you. Um, anybody have any questions or further discussion on this item?
Madam Chair, my only comment is I, I suspect it won't meet the guidelines for the COVID. It would be nice in one respect, because that funds are, are able to be used, I believe, for something like this. But the same token, I think our numbers would have been significantly different if it had been bid that way. So, you know, am I, uh, excited about expending taxpayer money above what we could have done probably eight or nine months ago? No, but that's, I think, the county is seeing a lot of delay, and they're going to see a lot of the cost because of delay. And this is just one of many that the costs are rising quickly. So if we wait any further, it also delays the project. So, you know, I personally am comfortable supplementing the budget, so that this can proceed, but, um, again, yield to the whole board, so.
All right. Well, is there a motion?
John, the best that 4H is willing to do is ten thousand?
Ten, maybe fifteen.
But they're also looking at putting up majority of the building as well, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
You have to remember, uh, you know, we're taking base bids, so we're eliminating the sand for the horse arena out of the bid. And so 4H will more than likely have to supplement to do that also, you know? So they're gonna get hit hard to make, you know, they know that they've got a long ways to go to get the money that they need to do the whole project. But we need this part to get done, to get excitement and get the project moving forward.
No, I agree with that. It's just we're, uh, we're, we're at close to a million dollars now in this investment from the county taxpayers. So, um, seven hundred and fifty for the purchase of the property, made some upgrades, now ninety-four thousand here on this bid, right? Is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, we gotta make up our mind whether we're gonna get this thing.
Right.
Accomplished or not. I understand. I understand all the taxpayers. I understand that. But I look at this, and maybe I'm wrong, but I look at this as a long-term investment in our youth. And I can't think of a better place to put money than into a situation that is going to be there for, you know, how many years. We're not looking at a one-year commitment. We're gonna look over decades. So, we have some resources available from this recovery act. We have not explored to the extent of how much of that we could utilize for this thing. And I agree with Commissioner Poppins. We've delayed on many other issues only to have to pay more money. And I don't know that that's the wisest thing to do for the Lincoln County taxpayers either. So I think it's time that we look at this proposal, as it may be a Band-Aid approach, but that we take the necessary action and get this going and showing these people that have been out raising this over a hundred thousand dollars, I commend them. So, uh, I think it's up to the commission to, uh, move this thing along.
All right, so.
I would move, I would move that, uh, we accept the proposal that John and Sherry have put together and, uh, move on this thing.
That would be to award to Precision Dirt Works?
The base bid.
Yeah.
The base bid. Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, so everybody understand the motion. All right, um, any further discussion? If not, I'll have Sean go ahead and call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Any need for an executive session today, Bill? All right. If not, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
Thank you. Sean, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes, uh, just a note, we have a joint meeting with the city of Sioux Falls this evening at seven o'clock in the Carnegie City Hall Commission Chambers in Sioux Falls. Just wanna make sure that we will have enough people in attendance. Um, Sean?